All right, the time is now seven thirty-one, and I would like to call our monthly meeting to order. Just for everyone's reference, in accordance with Public Act one oh one dash zero six four zero, this meeting is being held in person by remote attendance. And there has been information published on the library's website that gives people the opportunity to dial in or join by go-to meeting. All right, Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Here.
Trustee Gagani?
Here.
Trustee Humphries?
Here.
Trustee Kuntia?
Here.
Trustee Stapleton?
Here with the mask.
President Graber?
Here, thank you very much. We have a quorum. We're now on to agenda item number three, welcome to visitors. I don't know if we have any visitors, but if you're out there, you're well, we welcome you to our meetings. Thank you. We're now on to agenda item number four, approval of last month's minutes. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding last month's minutes?
I have none.
Okay.
I'll move to approve. I'll move to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Carissa. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve last month's minutes that has been seconded. Caitlin, could you proceed with the roll call vote, please?
Sure. Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Here. Oh, yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Kind of here.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes. Thank you very much. The minutes have been approved. We're now on to agenda item number five, financial matters. Julie, do you want to let us know how we're doing?
All right, we are fifty percent through the year.
Way.
Our first round of property tax revenue is reflected.
Way.
You can see that the library capital replacement fund is very well under budget. Our 2020 project is complete. And the total for that is only about forty percent of our total budget for that month. Or, excuse me, for the year. When you look at expenditures, fifty-two, fifty-one maintenance supplies is where the cost of PPE is reflected. And you can see that that will be well over budget. Now, we have applied for the FEMA IEMA grant that can reimburse us for up to seventy-five percent of eligible expenses. And Jen Rieske, our wonderful assistant direct, director, has put that in, and we had over thirty thousand dollars in expenses documented. So we are hoping to receive reimbursement through that. Any other questions?
I'll just make a couple of quick observations. On the property tax side, I was happy to see that we have over fifty percent received, essentially after the first round of property tax payments, which suggests we're on the right track there, which is good. And then we also, on the expenditure side, as you mentioned, we're only at forty-one percent. So if we, essentially, we're at fifty percent the rest of the year, we're still at ninety-one percent for the year. So I feel like at least from a financial perspective, we're in, we're doing well in 2020.
I agree. Thank you for itemizing that for us. Yeah, that's great.
Did anyone have any other questions or comments regarding the financial matters? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented?
So moved.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second, please.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call vote?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the financial matters as presented, agenda item number five. We're now on to agenda item number six, public comment on agenda items. Did we have any comments that were submitted?
No, there's nothing submitted through the how do we do.
Okay. That also means that agenda item number seven has been completed, which is public comment on other library business. So we're now on to agenda item number eight A, authorization to transfer monies from library fund to library capital replacement fund. And Julie, you can give us some background on this transfer.
This is something that we do annually. The library fund balance will remain at over a million dollars after the transfer. So we are recommending that we go ahead and make this transfer as budgeted.
Okay, and I think, and I think we all know this because I think we've been through this previously, but essentially, several years ago, we went through a capital needs assessment. We determined that, you know, based on what was needed, we could meet those objectives and meet those needs by transferring three hundred fifty thousand dollars per year from the library fund to the capital replacement fund, which is exactly what we're continuing with tonight if it's approved. So do we have a motion, do we have any questions regarding the authorization to transfer monies from library fund to the library capital replacement fund? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the transfer?
I make a motion to authorize a transfer of three hundred fifty thousand from the library fund to the library capital replacement fund.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the transfer set forth at agenda item eight A. It has been seconded. Caitlin, could you please proceed with the roll call?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the transfer of three hundred fifty thousand dollars from the library fund to the library capital replacement fund. We're now on to agenda item eight B, the twenty twenty-one salary structure. Julie, do you want to remind us of this agenda item?
This is the annual update to the salary structure. This is under our new system where we re-benchmark the entire structure in lieu of doing a cost of living across the board. However, we're going to do a cost of living across the board this year. The benchmark amount recommended by HR source is one point nine percent. This also takes into account the eleven dollar per hour minimum wage that will begin January first.
Okay, and I know that this was an agenda item or an item that we've discussed previously. It's in line with, as Julie said, the HR sources recommendation. So does anyone have any questions regarding that twenty twenty-one salary structure? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one salary structure?
I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one salary structure.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one salary structure that has been seconded. Caitlin, could you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the twenty twenty-one salary structure. We're now on to agenda item eight C, library services policy, section five point seven fines and fees. I also believe this is one that we've talked about a couple of times previously. But Julie, do you just want to provide a brief summary of this agenda item?
Right now, we're fine free. That is scheduled to end August third. As long as we are quarantining materials, I believe that we should be fine free. We had discussed previous to this that in the twenty twenty-one budget, we were going to put forth the idea of going fine free permanently. And so that is included in the budget. And we would simply extend the fine free rules that we have now indefinitely.
Okay, and I did review that. It looked like it made sense. It made a lot of sense as far as like if someone got beyond fifty dollars or a number of items, that's kind of what the enforcement mechanism is rather than the constant, you know, reminder of fees. You know, as is, as we had in place before the fine free structure. Does anybody have any questions regarding the update to the section five point seven fines and fees?
Well, my question is, it says forty-two days overdue. But I'm not following that since it's fine free. Okay, but there's, I'm sorry, right now until August first, there's no due date. But you're talking about after August first, then?
There, there is a due date. What happens is at forty-two days overdue, that item is billed to the person. So that's, the due dates are still in force. The threshold for number of overdue items is still in force. It's, that is simply when the bill notice is sent.
And that's a bill for replacement of the item?
Yes, and if they return the item, the bill is no longer active on their account.
And so when you closed down on March thirteenth, I thought it was till August first. There was, maybe it was until you reopened July sixteenth. Um, I'm really asking.
We extended all due dates. That was, that was a separate thing. We extended all the due dates into July after we closed.
Okay, till the end of July, right? I'm asking because I have things to.
Yeah, we had extended that through the beginning of July, and then once we opened to the public, then we started the implementation of the regular due dates again.
Okay, got it. So then the clock would have started for forty-two days to be fine free. Got it.
Correct. I have one question. And I may have read them incorrectly, but I got two different impressions from the Swan write-up and the, in our write-up. Do we put a hold, do we freeze the library card or lock it after a certain number of days? Or is it a certain number of items or some combination of the two?
It's actually a combination. It depends on what you have and how long overdue it is.
Okay, I saw one place that said after fourteen days, if you had an item that was more than fourteen days late, the library card was locked. And I thought that, I didn't think that's what we were doing. So I just.
If you have, it's five items, I believe. Hang on.
Yeah, that's what I thought, reading our write-up. If you had several things that were all late, eventually we would put a lock on the library card. And then when we got to forty-two days, we'd send them a bill for it, but.
Yes.
I'm fine with that, as long as it's more than one item and more than fourteen, one item for fourteen days sounded a little extreme. I think I saw that on Swan someplace.
Yes, and, and the Swan presentation had some different examples that aren't necessarily what we're doing.
Okay, I'm fine then.
I, I just want to say that I'm glad that we're, well, at least voting on this today. I, you know, I long been a fan of fine free, and I think, you know, some of the presentation materials, you know, outlining that overdue fines are, you know, most impacting the folks that can't afford them, staff morale improving, and you're kind of not having to deal with that ongoing discussion about can you pay this little amount of money before you check things out? I think it's a great idea. So I'm glad we're taking this step. I was curious for any, I don't know, Julie or Caitlin or Jen, if you attended this, this presentation, if any of the participating libraries had any negative response to this? Besides the kind of, you know, loss of revenue, I guess, which is fairly negligible, but what, did they experience any negative response to this, or was it all very positive?
The feedback from the fine free libraries that kind of led the way has been very positive. The only negative reactions they've had is a couple of people going, what about the revenue?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, and so, yeah.
So I assume nobody has gone back the other direction? Yeah, I didn't think so. I am very much in favor of this.
All right, do we have a motion to approve agenda item eight C, the library services policy, the update to section five point seven fines and fees?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve agenda item eight C that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much, Caitlin. We have approved agenda item eight C, and now are on to agenda item eight D, the Illinois non-resident library card program.
This is an annual action by the board to participate. We generally use the general mathematic formula for figuring out this fee. The fee actually is going down this year by ten dollars. And I would recommend that we continue participation.
And just as a reminder to everyone on the board, there's really, there's a certain methodology as to how the cost for the non-resident library card is determined. We really don't have discretion to deviate from that program, so I'm, I'm in favor of this.
Your other choice is tax bill method, which is really complicated to administer.
It's more than complicated. It's, it's also unfair, I think, but I will, I will move the agenda item eight D as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve agenda item eight D that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much, Caitlin. We have, we have approved agenda item eight D. Now we're on to agenda item eight E, authorized callers for Bank of America credit card account. I think this one was self-explanatory in the materials, but Julie, if you want to just give us a little bit of background?
We suddenly realized we had not done this since I arrived. Which is why Abby, who was two administrative assistants ago, was still on there. So this is a cleanup item.
Okay, does, do we have a motion to approve agenda item eight E to update the authorized callers for the Bank of America credit card account?
I will move to approve the authorized callers of Bank of America credit card account, item eight E.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve agenda item eight E that has been seconded. Caitlin, could you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved agenda item eight E. And now are on to agenda item number nine, unfinished business. Nine A is the twenty twenty-one draft budget and levy. Julie, do you want to give us an update on the revised budget?
So according to what you asked for at the June meeting, we have the levy at the zero percent level and the two percent level. The expenditures are identical between the two. This also includes the benchmark for salary and wage increases and a merit component, but those are only for certain staff that went over and above during the COVID crisis. So at the zero percent levy, the library fund balance is only about a hundred and ten thousand dollars different than at the two percent levy. And either way, we do include the library capital replacement fund transfer. So at the two percent levy, we're almost at that transfer being the only amount that's coming from the library fund balance. And at the zero percent levy, it has a little bit more impact to the library fund balance at year end. Oh, also on page thirty-five, the beginning library fund balance is actually misquoted. It is one million four hundred forty thousand and nineteen dollars. The projected year end balance is what is actually quoted there, the one million one hundred forty thousand one fifty-nine.
Oh, okay.
And in the expenditures side, the lower impact of the one point nine percent benchmark increase is due to staff turnover. And we will have a little bit better, more accurate predictions on those budget lines once we get all of our new people in and working. And that will be happening within the next couple of weeks. On the merit increase part, the total additional cost is under twenty thousand dollars. There are twenty-two employees that would receive an additional raise ranging from one to three percent. And all of the top percentage employees would, are in facilities and IT. And this is based on hours worked during the COVID crisis. For non-personal, for personnel costs that are non-wage and salary, IMRF and employee benefits renewals are the driving factors. For non-personnel costs, we're almost entirely flat with the exception of the liability insurance and also workers' comp that are together in that other insurances line. And we are going with the recommendation from Lyra, our joint self-insurance pool, on the level we should be budgeting for that renewal. As you can see, the library capital replacement fund has one big project, and the main component is the roof. Overall, the zero percent levy would cost the average taxpayer, they would actually get back two dollars and twenty-five cents under what they spent the prior year. On the two percent levy side, it's about that much over what they paid last year. So it's about two dollars and a quarter either way.
Which is around one percent, I believe, is it not? So one percent down or one percent up?
The, the thing that I really like about where we're at with the budget is the fact that we've tonight approved the salary portion essentially for twenty twenty-one, so we really can just sort of zero in on kind of the other stuff, which essentially is, it's nice to be able to break those two components up. The other thing is that we're, whether it's zero percent, one percent, two percent, it's within, I think, a hundred and eleven thousand dollars you mentioned, or it was in the materials. So it's, I'm not minimizing that number, but it's, but from our budget perspective, it represents essentially a nominal difference. In addition, because of the fact that our expenditures are so in line this year, whether it's zero, one, or two, we're essentially covering it with what we've paid or what we've saved or what we project to save for twenty twenty. So I think we're really close, and I feel good about really any of the alternatives. And I, and I do, part of me, I think, and I think I've mentioned this, would like to be at zero, but at the same time, I also recognize that next year, especially as school starts and maybe more kids are being homeschooled, then the libraries may be more heavily used, and so I also want to just keep that in mind and make sure we're not, we're looking at this from a long-term perspective and not necessarily just this moment in time.
We also have one other thing that I have not put in, in the budget reports. And that is to remind you all that the downtown TIF expires in twenty twenty. So in twenty twenty-one, which is payable in twenty-two, which will be our next budget, we will have the full new, new construction, all of that TIF district increased EAV coming on in our next budget year. And so that will reduce the amount that the individual taxpayer is paying. So if we hold this at a zero percent levy this year, a two percent increase next year would be offset by that additional EAV coming on. As you know, EAV goes up, tax rate goes down. Yes, Dave.
Well, that's, that's the good news, and it's, it's likely to happen. It's not. quite a slam dunk yet. They could at the last minute extend it or something like that. I don't think that's likely to happen. But that's, that would be good news for our taxpayers. It's just the downtown TIF. It's not the whole, not the whole village, but it's still substantial. There are a bunch of other uncertainties, though, that, that still trouble me. Or at least they're uncertainties and that always makes me nervous. I've heard everything from inflation to depression for next year. And almost everything in between. I've heard that, you know, some people feel that property values may sink somewhat. Other people feel that property values would go up. We haven't had a pandemic like this in my lifetime, and so it's a little hard to predict what's going to happen, even, even through the experts. I don't feel terribly strong about the choice between these two options. I could probably be talked into either one, but at the moment I feel more comfortable with the 2% one just to give us the potential for a little cushion next year if we get bad news. If we get good news next year, we can take advantage of that. But considering it's a 1% change in the out-of-pocket cost, I think that I would consider that good insurance for this year. Don't talk me out of that.
I'll do that next month, Dave.
We're gonna spend hours fighting over $2.
No, no, the, the, does anyone, does anyone have any other comments or observations regarding the budget? Dave, you and I are on the same page here as far as, maybe just slightly different perspectives, but 0% to 2% from my perspective is not. I mean, I, I, I feel good about where we're at. We'll also have another month of information when we finalize this next, next month. So I think we'll, we're gonna be in good shape to approve, you know, the final budget next month. But I'm happy to hear any additional comments or questions?
I think I would just say from like a devil's advocate perspective, it's just the matter of optics of, you know, are people going to sit there and do the math and listen to us when we say it's a $2 difference? Or are they just going to say the library raised it 2%? And that's, I guess, because they aren't drastically different numbers, it's more, you know, are we going to play on the team of, you know, kind of listening to our patrons and our, our, you know, community and just not even put that increase out there regardless of the actual dollars of it?
No, I, it's, it's hard to, because it's like, that's a, you know, we all understand what that actually means, the 0% to 2%. But someone else could just say, look, it's 2%, 2% is 2%. And so, yeah, it's a good point. Any other questions or comments regarding the draft budget and levy?
So if you all are good with these two levels, we will update. It will likely only be the same wage and salary lines that have any change from this month to next month.
Sounds good.
That sounds good. And again, I'm, I'm very excited about the, the new salary process and philosophy and all for that.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone. We are now on to Agenda Item 9B. COVID-19 response and reopening phasing plan. Julie, do you want to give us just a little bit of a background on this as well?
This is the authorization that you've given me to implement our phased reopening and response plan. And so each month, you're simply re-authorizing me to make those decisions regarding policy and procedure for a temporary amount of time while we're in the phased plan.
And the motion here would be to reauthorize the library director to continue to make temporary policy changes in consultation with the board president and within parameters of COVID-19 response and reopening phasing plan as presented. Does anyone have a motion to take that action?
I move we take that action as you just quoted.
I second all those words you said.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve Agenda Item 9B, the COVID-19 response and reopening phasing plan. That has been seconded. Caitlin, could you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved Agenda Item 9B and are now on to Agenda Item number 10, the library director's report. Julie?
Oh, well, we are just continuing slow and steady. In person, we have not even reached close to our capacity. Curbside continues apace. A lot of people are really enjoying that. We have restarted home delivery service and we actually had our first satellite stacks delivery and, and restocking at Oak Trace. So that was fantastic.
I bumped into those people today in the elevator.
So at this point, the next adjustment we're looking at is possibly redoing the way we do curbside to allow the Curtis Street entrance to be open to the public. We would basically move all the curbside operations into the café area and have a door counter person at the Curtis Street entrance as well as the Forest Avenue entrance. So that's our plan there. We do have a lot of new staff coming on in July. All of those folks that left us when we were reopening to the public, we have been doing that hiring. So as Caitlin can attest, a lot of new folks started at the beginning of the last pay period and a lot of folks will be starting on Monday. We also have our listening sessions coming up. We have in August, the Listening Session on Policing in Downers Grove. That's a partnership with the Village of Downers Grove and being hosted by the Downers Grove Park District at the rec center because we can't fit anywhere near 50 people here in this room. So we're using their gymnasium. The panel for that will be the village manager, Dave Fieldman, the chief of police, Chief Shannon Gillette, and our District 99 Superintendent, Dr. Hank Thiele. Joy Matson, who was our moderator in our Month of Homelessness Panel, will be a co-moderator for this event. And her co-moderator will be Michael Childress, the DuPage County NAACP interim president. So we're really looking forward to that event. That is Wednesday, August 5th at 7:00 PM. There are, as of my last look, 15 seats left. So we hope that people attend. There is also a way to enter your comments and and feedback on dglibrary.org/listen. You can find more information about the events there.
And you, you can attend virtually also.
What will happen is we'll be recording the event and the recording will be made available after the event.
Yeah, that's, that's what I meant.
And then in September, we will be doing our diversity, equity, and inclusion trajectory discovery project, which includes listening sessions with the community. Those are scheduled for Tuesday, September 22nd and Saturday, September 26th. And the board session will be following the regular meeting on September 23rd. All of that will be in the next issues of discoveries along with more information about a whole month of programming around diversity, equity, and inclusion. That was built also with the Telling a People's Story traveling exhibit that will be here at the library. And that is about African-American children's poetry. We will be having several virtual programs, a lot of which are related to the grant with telling a people's story. So we're looking forward to September and all of that programming coming up. And lastly, we have to say thank you to Assistant Circulation Manager Cheryl Pollack, who is retiring after 19 years of service. Cheryl is an amazing staff member. She led our mask-making team. She is just an amazing person and a fantastic leader in the circulation department. And she will be sorely missed. And her last day is in early August.
Okay, thank you very much, Julie. We are now on to Agenda Item 11, trustee comments and requests for information. Do we have any trustee comments or requests for information? Dave?
I don't know. I always have something to say, I guess. But first of all, I want to go back to those listening sessions and just to shout out, I think those are amazing opportunities for our community. And they're called listening sessions for good reason. These are, it's not going to be an hour and a half of speeches. It's going to be responding to questions and the people that are up front are going to be listening to the questions and listening to each other comment on the questions. So listening is a very good, good title for those. The other thing I just wanted to give is another huge shout out to the staff. I had the opportunity to, to walk around the building after the, after our new grand opening. And it looks very different and it looks pretty weird. And it doesn't look quite as welcoming as it used to. But it looks very open and functional and I just, I just think that what our staff has done is just amazing. And, and a sidebar to that is also, I was totally blown away by the number of paper bags full of items for curbside delivery. I mean, it wasn't a few hundred. It was thousands. And when they talk about moving that over into the the café area, I assume that is assuming that it's going to shrink a little, but right now it wouldn't fit.
They're actually talking about not doing the bags until someone comes to curbside to pick something up as a way to not use so many bags.
Yeah, that's fine. And, and I'm, I'm curious, did the amount of curb service go down when we opened the doors?
It did, but not by a huge amount.
Not by a huge amount. People are still being cautious, conservative, careful, safe. I'm all for that, but over time it'll go down, I think. But it's just a wonderful service that we do for the community and it's obviously very heavily used.
I'll be really curious to see next month's numbers about check, resuming in-person check-ins or checkouts. I know we took out, I don't know, 20 books the first week. I was like, we're going in, we're going in and we're gonna take them all and we're gonna bring them right back. I'd be, I'd be curious to know, I mean, even if like the average number of books per patron changes because of this new way we have to do, right? Like we go grocery shopping, we try to do like one step and let's be done. I wonder if it's changing patron bowering behavior as well?
Julie, have there been any issues that have come up that maybe like weren't anticipated or were a little bit out of the ordinary?
We have had some complaints about the lack of hands-on help, particularly with computers. We do have a way for staff to do remote access into the person's desktop to help them. But unfortunately, what we're finding is that people who aren't very tech savvy are very reluctant to do that.
Yeah.
So we're, we're doing our best to work through that. We have had a few people who bring their device and want to use the wifi and are looking for somewhere to sit. And we're not there yet. And this is something all of our neighboring libraries are struggling with as well.
Well, we have to balance safety with, I don't know, utility or service or whatever. And I think you're doing an excellent job of doing that. And, and for now, what we're doing is what we have to do, what we need to do. We have a 100% mask policy. And I saw a little piece of paper that we give to someone who objects to that and it is beautifully worded. We have lots of accommodations. We have lots of alternatives to them. How we can serve them if they choose not to wear a mask? But fortunately, none of those alternatives include their staying in the library building without a mask.
And by and large, we've had more issues with people allowing their mask to slip down than we have with people refusing to wear one.
Okay, any additional trustee comments or requests for information? Okay, thank you, everyone, and I will see you next month. And I hereby adjourn the meeting.